Good morning and welcome to the February 2nd Board of Supervisors meeting where, according to Punxsutawney Phil, we will have six more weeks of winter. We found out this morning. We will start today with the pledge of allegiance led by Vice Chair Valero. And a moment of silence. I asked this morning that you keep in your thoughts the family and friends of Deputy Frank Holguin, who passed this last week.
Please join me in saluting our nation's flag. Ready, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, our first item or our next item this morning is Supervisor Matters and we will start with Supervisor McCary.
This last week, I attended the Lindsay and Exeter City Council meetings. I had a meeting with our Solid Waste Department, with TCAG. I also am a member of the Yosemite Sequoia Resource Conservation and Development Council, where they took a vote and I am now their treasurer. I'm still trying to figure out those duties and see how we can move forward on that board. I met with Exeter Ambulance, Peter Saudio, have his meeting scheduled with their board. I met with Tulare County Department of Child Support Services. And I attended the Exeter Chamber of Commerce Retirement for Sandy Blankenship, where I presented plaques to Sandy and Sarah Tyler. They both left. Sandy had about thirty years of service in her retirement. Sarah had almost fifteen, I believe, and so they moved on. They have all new leadership there. I had a meeting with California Citrus Mutual. And this coming week, I'm meeting with more departments and department heads. I'll meet with Autor Controller. I will attend the monthly department head meeting. I'm meeting with the Ag Commissioner, the Fire Department. And Exeter Farmersville Alliance Clubs have reached out again for me to meet and speak at their meetings. Meeting with the Assessor's Office and the Ag Advisory Committee meeting will be meeting. So we have a full week and I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you Supervisor. Supervisor Townsend.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, everyone. Several things this last week. On the twenty-seventh, had a really long orientation Zoom with rural county representatives of California with Greg Norton, he's the outgoing president, and CEO, and Paul Smith, Vice President. Just talking about, as I'm the delegate this year, talking about the things that will be going on, what RCRC is working on. Really informational. It was really good. We look, I look forward to plugging in more and more with RCRC as the priorities of our county really align with those thirty-seven rural counties in California. So I think it's a great group to be involved with. On the twenty-eighth, I gave a vaccine update and status to our Rotary Club via Zoom and that was an interesting conversation. Of course, it's right in the mix. We'll hear from Tim Lutz and a little bit about all the changes that have been ongoing. So it was tough to sort of take a point in time and say, this is where we're at right now. But generally able to get a little bit of information to that group and there were some positive feedback from some of the ones that were in the sixty-five-plus category that had been able to get in and get vaccinated. And they had some positive feedback on how they went through the lines and how well that was handled. And then on the twenty-eighth, attended the Government Affairs Committee meeting for the Porterville Chamber of Commerce along with state and federal representatives, city of Porterville representatives, tribal representatives, school districts. The CHP was involved and several businesses. Those are always very informative and getting to share between state, federal, local, tribal offices and to see what's going on with each one and just be able to share in an open forum. So I always enjoy attending those monthly. And then on the twenty-ninth, had the Sierra View Foundation meeting. It's the organization that raises money for Sierra View Medical Center. Took a lot of, it was our installation of officers, but mostly we're taking time, giving kudos to the healthcare workers, to the CEO, Donna Hefner, that was in attendance. Some of the board members in attendance as well. And just propping them up and telling them what a great job that they've been doing through this time with all of the overtime that they've been putting in and how nimble they've had to be during this whole pandemic time and changing the way the hospital works and the way they bring people in. And so just kind of giving them kudos and propping them up. Over the weekend, what a beautiful weekend on Saturday and Sunday. And boy, Saturday in Springville was just amazing with so many people going up. I think the combination of people being shut in for so long and the biggest snow we've seen in many, many years just clogged the highways all the way, all the way up into the mountains. And so I did get a few calls from constituents in the mountain communities saying, what's wrong with these people from the valley coming up here? They're just trying to get up and see the beautiful snow and it was a great weekend. And then on the, on the second, had a Habit Hat for Humanity meeting. I serve on that board, Building Hope in Porterville. And mostly just talking about fundraisers coming up. Of course, that's been hindered through all this time, but we're still making a little progress. Looking forward to the next home build in Porterville. And then also reviewed on the same day, a student project from Harmony Magnet Academy. And I just want to give again, kudos to them. They've been, because these academies, they get the students to work in groups and do hands-on projects. And so that's hard enough when you're face-to-face. It's really difficult when you're online and trying to communicate that way. So just want to tell that the students that I reviewed had a great project. It was their elevator pitch and I was able to give them some input on that. And just really excited about where education is going in the academies and that they're doing a great job during this time in particular. And coming up this Thursday will be our Eastern Two League Groundwater Sustainability Agency meeting. Couple of things of note will be the, continuing to discuss the Friant Kern fix as we've been getting the agreements finalized there to provide the rest of the money that doesn't come from the state or federal government, from the private owners and water users to get the Friant Kern Canal fixed. And also we're looking at another big thing is just the truing up of our satellite system that measures evapotranspiration. We've had some preliminary numbers come in and decided to have a group from Cal Poly come in and do some other numbers side by side to kind of true that up, to get proper readings. So that'll be very important. And then also on Thursday, we're going to be talking about art here this morning a little bit. But I'm also, serve on the Burden Arts Now Committee to review student projects. And so we will be doing that again online coming up this Thursday. I'm looking forward to it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Supervisor Vanderpool.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. First and foremost, I want to send out my thoughts and prayers to all members of our Sheriff's Department and especially the family and friends of Deputy Frank Holguin. Twenty-plus years of service. We do really appreciate his dedication and service to the residents of Tulare County, but also to our country because he was a veteran as well. So he's very much going to be missed and we do honor him for his service and are very sad to see him gone. Obviously, this week was full of a lot of phone calls from constituents, both on, one in the vaccine situation and really just a lot of uncertainties there, whether it was from residents who had relatives in an assisted living facility who were very upset with the county for not releasing their vaccines. And I had them look at the letter that they received for their appointments being delayed. And they happen to be from Walgreens. So we don't control what Walgreens does, but there's just so much confusion out there and I really do hope that we can get some sort of clarity to residents so that they can feel a little bit better about their situation. And then I've got a ton of calls related to schools and Tulare City School District in particular. You know, hearing Supervisor Townsend mention this being a very exciting time in education. You know, it's taken out of context, right? Because that's the first time I've heard anything positive said about education in the state of California in the last year. So it's a very frustrating time and for those schools who were right there, ready to go with a waiver application and then the state shut them down and the state is holding them at that limit and not really showing any gray area or giving any credit for them to be able to return to an in-person learning environment. It's incredibly frustrating and just really the state circumventing local control is something that I really am frustrated about. And I know we'll hear a little bit more about that from Tim later. And then lastly, a couple of public meetings that are going to be taking place this week, actually on Monday, February eighth, at twelve PM. The Tulare Chamber of Commerce will be having their monthly Governmental Affairs Committee meeting. Those are always well-attended and those are via Zoom. Always great to hear what's going on from the various representatives there. And then at one PM in Farmersville, at the Greater, the Greater Kuwait Groundwater Sustainability Agency will be having its monthly meeting as well. Look forward to that. Should be positive. And we continue to roll forward with the groundwater sustainability agencies as these plans are being implemented. And that's all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you Supervisor. Vice Chair Valero.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Great day Tulare County. I too would like to take this time to remember Frank Holguin and the Sheriff's Department and sending out my condolences as I continue to lift his family up in prayer. Last week, I had a meeting with the San Joaquin Valley Homes to talk about continued work at the Summerlin Homes Development on the Tulare County side of Kingsburg. I am thankful to SJVH for working with the County Resource Management Agency Department to remedy residents' concerns. And so I just want to acknowledge and give kudos to all those involved for coming to the table and being able to work out solutions for the betterment of the residents in that area. We had a very successful Ivanhoe Crosswalk ribbon cutting and a little library unveiling in Ivanhoe last week. I want to personally thank the RMA Department for working with this community early on in my tenure and identifying needs of the community. Thank you for your diligence, your listening ear and collaborative engagement to improve the lives of the Ivanhoe community. And I also like to take this time to thank my colleagues on this dais for the contributions and also for the support of this crosswalk. Last week, I helped hand out certificates to all awardees for the Dinuba Chamber Citizen and Business of the Year event. Archpreet Pranu is a Teenage Citizen of the Year. Maria McElroy, Junior Citizen of the Year. Cheryl Nicolay, Distinguished Citizen of the Year. Debbie Newton, Senior Citizen of the Year. Dopkins Funeral Chapel, Small Business of the Year. And then Valley Labor Services, Large Business of the Year. On Saturday, I had the opportunity to work in the Rose Garden at the Woodlake Botanical Gardens. And if you haven't been there, I highly encourage you to travel to Woodlake to see this beautiful site and you can walk around a three-mile lagoon in that community as well. Thank you to the Kiwanis Club of Woodlake, the Tulare County Master Gardeners and the students of Woodlake High School for your wonderful contributions to community. I also had a very productive meeting with Terry Solis, who is the Vice President of Outreach and Expansion for Bitwise Industries in Fresno, the tech hub of the Central Valley. We were able to have an authentic conversation regarding its reach and impact and how it can fill the gap in areas that have been hard to reach, especially in rural, unincorporated communities. Bitwise is making a concerted effort to branch out, connect with, and train up future leaders in the tech industry. I will be hosting a virtual town hall meeting for residents in the Summerlin Homes community next week. And this will be an opportunity for residents to discuss any issues that are important to them. And then I continue to field calls and questions about the vaccination process and the challenges to getting on the list. And my hope is that we will continue to see light at the end of the tunnel for those that are interested in getting vaccinated, but also light at the end of the tunnel for this COVID-19 ordeal. And that is all I have, Chair.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Like everyone else, I fielded quite a few calls and emails and whatnot regarding vaccination and distribution and all that. I also was on a virtual meeting with BizFed Central Valley. This is a group of associations and employers that share expertise and resources and whatnot to hopefully make policy better for those businesses in the Central Valley. I also participated in a podcast that you can now hear on the paper trail for the Sun Gazette, again mostly regarding the vaccine. And then Thursday night, I moderated the town hall that Health and Human Services provided to the community. There were over, I think at one point, there was about one thousand four hundred people that were viewing. So this went very well. We answered a lot of questions. I know I got a lot of feedback afterwards. It said, thank you. A lot of my questions were answered. It is frustrating considering, as we all know, a lot of folks out there want the vaccine. We're ready to give the vaccine. We just don't have enough of the vaccine to give. So hopefully that'll start changing soon. So hopefully that'll start changing soon. And with that, we will move on to our next item. And that is to receive an update from the Health and Human Services Agency on COVID-19 status. And Mr. Lutz will be joining us remotely today. Are you there, Tim?
Good morning, Madam Chair. Hopefully you can hear me okay.
I think so.
All right. Well, then with that, I will jump in since it's still a lot of information to cover for you. Our cases today are at 45,398, which is up 1,468 over the last week, and that's 3.3%. Our deaths continue to remain very high. Unfortunately, we saw an additional 54 deaths over the last week, which brings us to 606 deaths across the county. Our number of, of active cases, which again, that's, you know, your recoveries, take out your, your deaths from our total cases, is finally dipping back below 3,000 cases. And we hope to see that continue to, to go down toward the 500s, 600s that we were seeing in early fall. So I mentioned our weekly cases, our total weekly cases from the prior week are down 34.6%, which important to note, that's our lowest number in eight weeks. So good news. Cautionary piece, our case rate level still remains high, but we continue to see a downward trend in our, in our cases. Our seven-day lagged case rate is, we're projecting at 50.8 per 100,000. The state estimates us at 47.2, so pretty, pretty close within that range. Testing volume adjustment was, in this case, two tenths of a percent up, given that our testing volume was basically right on with the state average, which brought us to 47.3. Our non-lagged on, I'll note, our non-lagged case rate is showing at 27.2. That's again, positive, going in the right direction, but that most definitely will change when we get to next week, probably increasing as more tests come in. Then when we look at our testing positivity rate, also seeing that continue to, to trend downward at 12.1% for the week ending. And in this case, I guess there was an error on my sheet, week ending 123. And then our testing positivity for our lowest quartile within the Healthy Places Index was at 14.4 versus our average across the whole county at 12.1. So definitely still wanting to, to push testing volumes in our lowest HPI quartiles and make sure that we're, we're equalizing that across the county. Our, our effective is estimated at .79, indicating that the spread of COVID continues to be decreasing in, in the community. And our hospitalizations also continue to decrease, down 5.9% over last week to 142. Our hospitalizations still do remain very high, but important to note that our hospitals are no longer operating at or above capacity and, and most crucially have averted having to move to crisis standards of care. Then I, I mentioned deaths. Last week, we saw our highest recorded weekly deaths throughout the pandemic. Important note there, numbers this week are, are a little overstated. Last week's a little understated due to a issue with the state's data system on January 21st, which didn't allow deaths to be reported. So there was a bit of a lag there on, on which week they fell. Bottom line though, unfortunately deaths have remained very high and we would expect them to continue to be high for the next few weeks since they really represent the, the most lagging metric on, on what COVID-19's doing to our community. So looking at all of our metrics, we do see positive directions. We're definitely clearly coming out of the largest surge in infection rate that we had through the pandemic. And hopefully we'll be able to get us back to where we were in early fall, where we were just getting to that, that cusp of the red tier. But it's important to note, particularly given the slow supply of vaccine, we, we all as a community need to be continually diligent, diligent toward this, this virus. We know that there are mutated variants of the virus in California that, that seem to have a, a much higher infection ability, not necessarily severity, but how quickly it spreads and how easily it spreads. So there is quite a bit of concern given the supply issues on the vaccine and these new mutated variants that we could see another surge in late winter or early spring before we can get a sufficient number of people vaccinated and immune to this virus. So important that we continue our diligence, recognizing that we still have quite a bit of road in front of us. So moving now to vaccine, and again, I appreciate the, the board members' comments on some of the calls that you're continuing to get and challenges. We've received approximately 40,350 doses. Total residents that have been vaccinating, vaccinated, about 24,147. And then about 15.6% of those have also received their second doses. The, last week, we did just shy of 5,000 doses, so 4,982 doses. So what I would note here, we've been averaging close to about 5,000 doses a week for the last two weeks with, with an average of 3,000 to 3,500 doses being shipped. And we feel that we've really kind of caught up with some of those early delays in late December, early January and are really now butting up against supply issues on that vaccine. Some key updates that I'd like to highlight from, from last week's meeting. So the, the first on the data system, we know we've, we've talked a lot about the challenges with the state data system. I'm pleased to say that the state did select us, Tulare County, to be in their current phase rollout for the My Path system. Had a meeting this morning with them on, onboarding and some of the, the technical pieces that we need to work through to go live. But the plan right now is this weekend's pod out at International Ag Center, we will be live with the new system. And then crucially, second doses, there's, there's been a lot of discussion on, on second doses. And so I wanted to take some time to just talk through a couple of points. We recognize that the concern with inconsistent messaging. There are some federal and state sources, experts that are pushing for one dose, recognizing the, the supply issues and the slower rollout. Some are advocating that we do one dose and therefore maximize at least the number of people with some level of immunity. California Department of Public Health and also the CDC are still holding to the importance of, of the second dose. So what, Public Health in Tulare County, we advised our vaccine partners that our priority continues to be to ensure that people are receiving their, their second dose. And the key pieces why we feel that was important at this point is there just isn't enough, you know, good information about what one dose versus the, the two doses will do to the efficacy of, of that, of that vaccine. And given that there is still this level of, of skepticism and concern about the vaccine, we feel to maintain trust in this program and acceptance of this vaccine, it's important to stick to what the clinical trials have, have shown, which is that second dose. So with that policy though, I, I do want to highlight the fact that, that, that creates challenges for us on first-dose pods. Because right now, we're really trying to make sure we catch all those second doses. And mostly this week, we're doing second-dose vaccine clinics and even into next week. And we, we recognize that this creates frustration in the community. People want to get into their first doses. And right now, the supply just isn't there to make sure we get everybody vaccinated with their second dose and get new first doses rolling at the speed we were. And, and we're not unique in this. Most counties in the state are having similar challenges. Some are, are pushing through and wanting to stretch out how long they, they are going to administer that second dose. So instead of the 21 days, 28 days, they might go much longer, you know, even a month or more longer to vaccinate more. Others are doing what we're doing, which is really trying to pause and hold those second-dose clinics to make sure people, people are getting their second dose. So again, supply continues to be a big challenge. In the next couple of weeks, we're going to be needing to do 8,800 second doses of, of our Moderna vaccine. And right now, we're doing a lot of the Pfizer second doses. So again, a lot of second doses, which is curtailing supply for new first doses. Before I move from doses, I don't know if there's any questions. It's harder not seeing everyone's face to read cues, so I'll keep going unless you tell me to stop.
That's fine, Tim. We'll just interrupt if we need to.
Okay. So vaccine pod administration and staffing, we're, what we're looking at are a couple of ways that will help augment our existing, our existing operations. We're in the final stages of, of finalizing an agreement with a company called Curative. The goal with Curative is that they would take over our AgriCenter pod and hopefully expand the Porterville College later. They're currently doing a, a number of other counties across the state. Most notable, they have been working with Los Angeles at Dodger Stadium. More locally, they are working with Fresno County to take on three or four of their pods by middle of February, in addition to Stanislaw County. So they, what they do is they, they come in, their pod structure would be pretty much identical to how we're doing ours. They would hire local staff to be at those pods. And then they bill the administrative fee that's allowable for giving the vaccine. The important piece there, no out-of-pocket from anybody receiving the vaccine. For those that don't have insurance, Curative would bill HERSA, or, or Health Resources and Services Administration, to get reimbursed for administering that dose. And then the other piece that we're working on is we were informed late last week that the state will allow us to convert, or add, I should say, one of our Optum sites to be also doing a lane for vaccinations. We were excited that that opportunity, again, that's a state resource. They would basically bring in the additional staff to, to add that lane. Seeing where we're doing our, our vaccine clinics now, we're, our preference is to look at our Dinuba location and convert that. But there are still some logistical concerns from Optum. They want to do a walk-in facility. Our preference for safety has been drive-through, but certainly we'll, we'll work with them and we're working through what that would look like.
And I just want to thank you for, again, that strategy and that ability to really focus on what additional resources we can get to help support. However, does that also come with additional vaccines? Or are we anticipating more of an abundance of vaccines to then fill the roles of all that we're bringing in to help support this? Because I just, again, with, without the vaccines present or, or additional, we really need to put more pressure on the state so that way we do have those on the ground, ready to provide those vaccines. But then if we're not getting enough, how are we going to be useful in moving that forward?
That's an excellent question Supervisor, and, and astutely noted in that unfortunately, that would come out of our existing allocations. So they would basically function as another provider, which is, is definitely less than ideal. I think it's nice to have the resource and make sure that we have consistent vaccinations happening in, in our communities, but it, we still run into that supply issue. The, the state's feeling that we might start to see some additional Moderna coming through. It's not clear on, on some of the Pfizer allocations, but we're, we're really still waiting for Johnson &amp; Johnson and AstraZeneca to get approvals before we start to see, you know, a, a much more sizable jump in our supply.
Thank you, Tim. And nonetheless, I do appreciate all the work that is going into setting up those structures to be ready for such an increase in vaccines. Thank you.
Tim, real quick question before you proceed. Just, I should have asked a while back, but when you talk about having 40,000 or so doses being given here in Tulare County of the vaccine, does that include any skilled nursing facility numbers? Or is that strictly of the county allocated vaccines that have come from the state?
That does include our partners, which would include the pharmacies.
Okay.
A critical piece there is going back to some of the limitations with the state system. There's delays. I, I know we, as a county, actually had some delays. Staff worked to get all of that backlog caught up. And so our, our numbers jumped quite a bit. I, I believe that we're having some of those similar challenges with our pharmacies. We had a, a call with Walgreens last week to talk through their program. We identified some, some issues that I communicated up to the state to see if they can assist on, on speeding some of that process up. But we, we know the, the frustration and I, I heard the comments and I've heard it from multiple sources on the slow rollout for our assisted living and skilled nursing facilities. Our understanding is, at least on the case of Walgreens, all first doses have been administered to skilled nursing facilities, but the assisted living facilities are, are still, they're working through. Those residents are absolutely able to, to try and sign up if appointments become available through us, recognizing that they kind of have two paths that they can, that they can take. And unfortunately, it's, it's frustrating because of the, the slow rollout and limited supply, but we're trying to be as accommodated as possible.
Thank you.
And then I would note with our call center, we, our first week of the call center, we had over 8,000 calls. And I know we had 7,000 in the first four days. And quite a few calls that were left as voice messages over the weekend. We are looking to beef up more staff. The good news is people are not getting busy signals. They have options of, of where they can select to be directed when they call, but we want to make sure that we're getting back to people and getting their questions or concerns answered. Then this next week, some, some key areas that we're focusing on, we're finalizing a draft vaccine playbook and inventory policy that, that way we can help ensure consistency across Tulare County. And we previewed that draft playbook with the providers that are assisting in getting vaccine rolled out yesterday. And really what, what the initial proposal at this point is, is that we were prioritizing supply across all of our current phases, the 1A and 1B Tier 1 or 1B, in addition to those that are 65 plus. And generally, what we're going to be trying to do is, is allocate 25% of the supply across the target groups. So 25% to our food and agriculture, 25% to first responders, 25% to education, childcare, and then 25% to 65 plus. The advantage to this strategy is again, we're not weighting any one population as, as the highest priority. But the downside to this is that it also means a slower rollout to all groups. But the downside to this is that it also means a slower rollout to all groups. But we're we're trying to also ensure and that we can roll this out equitably. As we start to get, like, say, we get through most of the first responders, then we'd modify that formula to, again, focus on more vaccine supply to the other populations. Important to note, the 25% allocations are a general guideline. And if we have a population or person that's come in, has an appointment that's eligible, we want them to get vaccinated. And we don't want to get too stuck into a formula mentality at the expense of of speed and getting vaccines out. But we also want to provide some level of of guidance and targeting. So what we are asking our providers is which priority populations can you focus on, in which communities? And then how many can you vaccinate? And then we start to make distribution decisions based on providers' ability to reach those targeted populations.
Tim? Yes, and 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 thank you for sharing that, because that's another question that I've been getting a lot lately, is the teachers. And I know that, for example, in Fresno County, they've been having teacher pods or or at-site. But what what people also have to understand is that when you've seen one county, you've only seen one county, because all counties are doing things differently. And so so I like how how now the the clarification of the 25%, 25% kind of rollout. So that way, the 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 people can really get an understanding of, again, where are the vaccines going and to whom? And that way, we can really identify and let residents know that this is the approach that is being taken. But again, difficult to surmise, given the fact that, obviously, like I said, counties are doing things differently. But then one person will see, well, why is Fresno County vaccinating teachers, but Tulare County isn't? And due to the 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 lack of vaccines, one, but two, just trying to get through the different groups. And so, again, thank you for sharing this information.
Of course, and and our goal is, once the playbook is finalized, it'll be up on the website for all of the community to to see. We, again, want to be as transparent as possible, recognizing limited supply creates a lot of frustration. And then I I did mention that with this playbook, our hope is to finalize some additional allocations to our providers in the next couple of days. What we're looking at is really pushing most of our Moderna vaccine to our community providers. Because of the the cold chain requirements with Pfizer, Moderna is far easier for providers to be able to manage and use out in the community. So that's that's going to be our our strategy. And then, like, our larger pods like AgCenter going forward will probably be mostly Pfizer-based.
Can I just ask one other quick question? Sorry, Chair. Can you briefly explain here, and I know you shared it before, but how that gets distributed to our FHQs? To, so with the county receives the vaccines, then how are is that then distributed to our our clinics and other areas of support?
So there are two primary ways. Our our preferred route is if we have, so we meet with our providers twice a week typically, so Mondays and Thursdays. And that's designed to help communicate expectations, goals, and things like that. And then we also provide survey information to our providers to tell us how many people they can vaccinate and which communities, et cetera. What we then do is we can set up direct allocations from the state. So normally, the shipment comes to us. If if we instead say we'd like 500 doses to Family Healthcare Network, another 500 to ARIA, those can go. The other path is we do a redistribution where we have agreements set up that are approved by the state. We then transport that that vaccine to the providers. That's less preferable, because generally, the manufacturers don't want the vaccine being moved multiple times before its final destination. But we we do do that as well, recognizing that sometimes we don't have enough vaccine for bulk lots going to those providers. But we do have have weekly communication with them to understand what their requests are and try and fill them. Right now, we're prioritizing based on what they can fill within a week, recognizing that supply is still that challenge. Okay. Then, lastly, I just wanted to say, recognizing that we did butt up against just the statewide average on testing. You know, I I will highlight that we're making use of the mobile bus. This week, it's in it's a neighborhood church in Visalia, but we're continuing to work to move it to various spots across across our communities. We have a a good rollout strategy that will have that bus plus some of our mobile testing locations set up across the county. We also, staff are working on a cool concept of of using Visalia Convention Center to begin offering testing through their ticket booth, already built in with, you know, the protections of the the window, the small hole area to be able to give people their information and the swab and get the swabs. So hoping to be able to go live with that in the coming weeks. And we'll work with downtown Visalia to encourage people to make use of those testing facilities. And that's that's really the key areas that I had. I would be happy to, I'm sure there's a lot of questions from the board, and be happy to answer those.
Supervisor Vanderpoel?
Thanks, Madam Chair. Tim, you you didn't really mention anything about schools. Do you have any update from the state or any anything from your association? I I know that the concerns continue to arise, and I know that the state has pulled the local autonomy and local ability to grant waivers even on a limited basis. So can you share any updates or comments there, please?
Yes, absolutely. And, yeah, I it was, I didn't have it in the report mostly because, you know, frustratingly little has happened over the last week. I I know, I I've seen quite a few different, different news articles coming out. And it's it's unfortunate that that's at this point where we're getting news from, because it's been pretty quiet on the on the side of of Department of Public Health. My understanding is that the state pushed back the requirements for schools that was supposed to be yesterday's deadline, because there are so many challenges across the state for being able to implement that the Safe Return to Schools Plan. It was fairly widely publicized that. I know that the governor even had expressed frustration in meeting with some some school groups, because given these delays, the the high likelihood that that school, in in some cases, students would not be returning at all this year to in-person, was was quite a frustrating thing. That it seems like there there's a a huge gridlock at at Sacramento at this point with the legislature, the governor, the 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 large teacher unions and also school districts, where unfortunately, the ones that that are suffering the most are our students who are at home.
Any other questions for Tim? Supervisor McCray?
It's not a question, it's more of a comment that I I did watch the town hall. And Supervisor Shuckley and and HSSA stepped in a phenomenal job. And it has literally answered every question that I've been asked, and I've been asked over and over and over. And I highly recommend anyone who hasn't watched it to watch it, because it's very informative. And my hat's off to you for the great job that you've done, Tim. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Tim? All right, Tim, thank you very much for your report. Take care, and hopefully, we'll see you in person next week.
All right, thank you. Appreciate the support.
Okay, our next item is a presentation given by the Art Selection Committee regarding art pieces selected to be displayed in the administration building, which is where we are.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Britt, Ms. Flores. I'm Brooke Sisk, General Services Agency Director. I'm here today on behalf of the Public Art Selection Committee to present the artwork that's been selected to display here in the lobby of your building. And also, a mural that will be painted on the north wall of the chambers in Conference Room AB. I'd like to thank both Chair Shuckley and Vice Chair Valero for their continued leadership and participation on the Art Selection Committee, which also includes myself and other department representatives depending on the project. So for this project, your chief clerk, Melinda Benton, has also served as a committee member, and we greatly appreciate her input and participation.
That's because this is her room.
It's not showing. Hang on, just a second. There we go. Thank you. So this project would also not be possible without our ongoing partnership with the Arts Consortium. And I'd like to acknowledge Ampelio Mejia Perez, who I believe is available on Zoom today, in case any additional questions come up. And his efforts in reaching out to artists resulted in 25 submissions by nine different artists. So we had a pretty tough choice ahead of us, because there was only room for 12 pieces here in the lobby. So as follows, I'm going to show you the 12 pieces that were chosen. And we anticipate that those will be displayed sometime in the next month or two. Some of them will need to be framed, we'll hang them up. And also, you'll see at the end, there are some sculptural-type pieces as well that we'll have shelves for. So the first piece is a print of a photograph by Ed Revelle, called "The Grapevine Trail." I also wanted to mention, there is only one repeat artist from the Government Plaza Show. So we got submissions from different artists for this collection. So that was pretty exciting. Lots of different Tulare County artists that were interested in participating.
Brooke, well, we know when these are displayed, where in the county these folks live.
We could do that. Yeah, so one of the requirements for for submission is that the artists need to live in Tulare County, so. Then we have, where where, I can never say the word, Per Grove. And this is a picture by Ed Revelle, as well. We have "Springville Cow" by Elaine Anderson.
There you go, Dennis. No, that's up already.
So this is a color print of a photograph. Elaine Anderson is the only repeat artist from the Government Plaza Show, and she also happens to be a county employee. We have "Shadow on the Bridge" by Elaine Anderson, again, another photograph. A lovely picture, it looks like at sunset or sunrise, of the Fox Theater by Terry Ogden.
That'll be a sunset.
Sunset. Kings River Canyon, also by Terry Ogden. Pumpkin Hollow Bridge by Terry Ogden. So you have some very colorful pieces. Then we get into a couple of paintings. So we have an oil painting here by Joy Coller called "My Farm Montage, Spring and Summer." And the companion piece to that, "My Farm Montage, Fall and Winter," by Joy Coller, also an oil painting. And then we have "California Gold," a painting by Nanette Rhodes. And then we have a couple of baskets. So the actual baskets will be on display, and the artist is Tony Best. This one is called "Filling the Gap." I've actually seen this one in person, and it, the picture does not do it justice. It's absolutely gorgeous.
It's a gourd. Is that a gourd?
It is a gourd, yes.
Beautiful.
And good one. Then we have another basket piece called "The Ammonite" by Tony Best. So those are the 12 pieces that were selected. And in the event we have extra room, we have a couple other alternates. But we we thought 12 pieces will probably be about the the extent of what the lobby can accommodate. In addition to the artwork that will be on display temporarily in the lobby, a mural will be painted on the north wall of this room. There were three artists that submitted renderings, and the committee chose to go with the one depicted here. The clerk also has the painted, smaller rendering. It really, the electronic image just doesn't do it justice. It's so colorful and detailed. And this piece is called "Tulare County Past, Present, and Future," and the artist is Stevie Mejia Daniels. She will actually be painting it directly onto the wall. We will be making some cosmetic improvements in this space, so we want to make sure to time that properly so that it's not damaged. So it will likely be later in this year that the that that mural will be painted. We want to minimize the disruption and also make sure that it is not damaged in the process. So I'd like to thank all the artists who submitted their work for consideration. There were many, many quality pieces to choose from. It it was a tough decision for the committee, but we were excited to get some really good pieces. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Brooke? I have one question. With with the mural, it's going to go across the the east wall, correct?
The north wall.
Wait, what way am I? Is that east? Anyway, how like, how tall, what are the measurements of it? Do we have that?
Um, we don't.
Okay.
I'm I'm not sure if Ampelio is on the line. He might be able to answer that, if he is.
They're they're four foot by 24 foot, I believe, is what we were asking for.
Okay.
Great.
That'll be nice.
Also, I'd like to say that we had one artist from Springville, two from Tulare, one from Farmersville, and two from Visalia.
Great, thank you. There, I think this has been a a great endeavor to display public art within our our facilities here in the county. We have some incredible artists throughout Tulare County. The age ranges have been great. And as Supervisor Townsend said, the the different medians from, you know, the baskets to photos to oil paintings, it's just a a great opportunity to highlight Tulare County. So thank you all for your work also, Brooke.
Thank you. I also wanted to mention the the collection at Government Plaza is is still up. The pieces are for sale, as will, except for the mural won't be for sale. But the rest of the pieces here in the lobby will be for sale. So the agreement is that they will hang for one year, and after that time, they can be purchased. So it has been over a year already at Government Plaza. One of the pieces has been purchased, so we may rotate some additional pieces in to replace those when they sell. So just want to put it out there, some of them are are really great prices for artwork. So I encourage you, if there are any that have been, that you've had your eye on, to look into that.
It's always, it's always great to support local artists. I I enjoy doing that. One other thing, you know, with the Government Plaza installation, we did a little ceremony, reception. Obviously, right now, we can't do that. What what's the timeline for getting this artwork up? And will we do any kind of promotion with it?
Yes, we're talking about potentially doing a Facebook Live event of some sort, so that we may be able to have have the artists themselves outside and then do a a few people at a time to be able to walk through the live, to and then do a few people at a time to be able to walk through the lobby and view it. And then do something streaming or available on the Internet. So we'll look into all the details on that. But then we could still make it special while still keeping everyone safe.
Okay. Supervisor Valero?
I'd just like to share, I know our chair forgot to mention someone. And that someone I'd like to share is Chair Shucklian for really spearheading this. I know that this has been an endeavor of hers early on in terms of just, yes, making sure that we have more public art in our county spaces to see, but also to recognize and appreciate. So again, thank you to Chair Shucklian for spearheading this.
I kind of wish you would have thanked yourself.
Yeah, well, I was going to, but, you know.
Good job. Thank you.
I was waiting for you to say something.
I too want to chime in, and thank you for your efforts. And, you know, really is a great showcase of local talent and some of the local beauty that we have here in our own county. And why should our county buildings not symbolize that? I think that's a great idea.
And I have dibs on "Springville Cow" a year from now.
You're buying that one.
It's one of my favorites.
All right. Thank you, Brooke.
Thank you.
Thank you, Allison. Okay, moving right along, we will now have our public comment time. Public comment period. Members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda. Under state law, matters presented under this item cannot be discussed or acted upon by the board at this time. For items appearing on the agenda, the public is invited to make comments when the item comes up for board consideration. Please complete and submit a comment card indicating your interest in that particular agenda item. Any person addressing the board will be limited to a maximum of three minutes so that all interested parties have an opportunity to speak. At all times, please use a microphone and state your name and address for the record. Do we have anybody present here today for a public comment for an item not appearing on the agenda? Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment from the phone?
Madam Chair, we do have phone comments.
We do?
Yes.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Good morning. Thank you for holding. You are now connected to the board meeting. Please state your name and address for the record. Your three minutes will begin now.
Good morning. My name is April Lancaster, and I am a resident of Visalia. I bring my public comment to you today in the hopes that you can help effect change for many small businesses in the Visalia area. I am a small business owner two times over. I own Lancaster Creations and the Organic Apothecary and Communiqueteek in historic downtown Visalia. Additionally, I am a cottage food producer, and I also serve as the Executive Secretary of the Visalia Farmers Market Association. Since the start of the coronavirus pandemic event last March, the county health department has suspended all TFS temporary food facility permits for special events in Tulare County. This has resulted in over 10 small food businesses being unable to attend the Visalia Farmers Market on a weekly basis, resulting in a considerable impact on those food businesses, which include, but are not limited to, Component Coffee, Baked Visalia, Wesley's Wheatless, Rafio Chocolate, Mediterranean To Go, Root Jamaican Cuisine, and Taco's Lucha. Some of these food businesses have been forced to close as a result, including Easy Vegan, Good Boy Boba, and Cafe Quito. Additionally, this issue has had and continues to have a considerable financial impact on the Visalia Farmers Market Association as these producers represent nearly one-fifth of our organization's total income. It seems that ours is the only county in the state to have disallowed TFS permitted vendors to sell at Farmers Market. And the impacts of this decision are wide-reaching for the producers in our community. We have encouraged all of our food producers to schedule their Phase 1 Tier 1B food and ag immunizations as we realize this may be a factor in the decision-making process. I truly appreciate the work that each of you do for the good people of Tulare County, and I respectfully ask that you take any and all possible action to assist these businesses during this challenging time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lancaster. Any other?
Yes. Good morning. Thank you for holding. You are now connected to the board meeting. Please state your name and address for the record. Your three minutes will begin now.
Diane Domingo.
Go ahead.
Oh, my name and address?
Yes, please.
Oh, Diane Domingo, 759 Burdini Circle, Danila, California, 93618.
Go ahead.
Well, I'm complaining that we should have more wages for the IHSS worker providers. It should be like $15 an hour because of cost of living.
Okay. Thank you for your comments.
Madam Chair, that concludes public comment.
All right. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Our next item, we will move on to our consent calendar. These items are routine, are usually approved by one motion. Before action by the board chair, we'll ask the board members and the public if they wish to remove any item from the consent calendar for separate consideration. Are there any items to be removed? Board? Not seeing any, then I'll entertain a motion. We have a motion by Supervisor Macaria, a second by Supervisor Valero. Please cast your votes. Is that a yes?
I cast my vote.
Well, you cast. Okay, motion passes 5 to 1. Thank you. We will now move on to item 5, which is our 9:30 a.m. timed item, which is a public hearing, a request from the Human Resources and Development Department to consider imposing the county's last, best, and final proposal to the Tulare County Deputy Sheriff's Association Units 13 and 15 pursuant to Government Code Section 3505. I will now open the public hearing. The next item before the board is a public hearing regarding the impasse between the Tulare County Deputy Sheriff's Association Units 13 and 15. I will refer to both units jointly as TCDSA. We are considering the impasse and unilateral implementation of the county's last, best, and final proposal made to TCDSA on the sole issue of overtime. This item comes before us for final resolution of the impasse between the county and TCDSA. Mr. Britt?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jason Britt, County Minister of Officer. I just want to provide some brief background prior to proceeding with this hearing. The county first presented the overtime proposal to TCDSA in November 2018, and again when TCDSA began successor MOU negotiations in approximately the spring of 2019. The county's proposal included the overtime proposal before the board today. The parties did not reach agreement on the overtime proposal, but agreed to reopen the MOUs on the issue. The parties began renegotiating this same overtime issue in May of 2020, and again did not reach agreement. The county presented TCDSA with a last, best, and final proposal on October 14, 2020. Mediation has occurred, and impasse procedures were initiated and have been exhausted.
Thank you. It is now appropriate to conduct a public hearing on this board's consideration of impasse and unilateral implementation of the county's last, best, and final proposal to TCDSA Units 13 and 15. The procedure will be as follows. First, we will allow public comment on this item for those who wish to speak. Under our rules of procedure, each speaker will be permitted three minutes. The total comment period will be limited to 15 minutes total. Following public comment, the TCDSA representative and the county negotiator will each have an opportunity to make a presentation. Each will be able to speak for up to 15 minutes. At the conclusion of the comments and presentations, the public hearing will be closed. With that, the public hearing is now open for comments regarding the impasse and the board's consideration of unilateral implementation of the county's last, best, and final proposal. We will start by receiving public comment. Are there any members of the public who wish to address the issues? Madam Clerk, do we have any phone comments?
We do not, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. We will now allow TCDSA to make its presentation on these issues. Is there anyone representing TCDSA who wishes to make a presentation? Come forward, state your name. That's fine, Tom here.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Supervisors, Mr. Britt and Ms. Flores. Javier Martinez, representing the TCDSA. Thank you for this opportunity. So I just want to go back a little farther back than Mr. Britt did on how we ended up here today. So in 2016, there was a court ruling in the Flores versus City of San Gabriel that set precedent requiring cash and lieu benefits be included in the regular rate of pay for overtime purposes. Once the ruling was set, several associations across the state filed similar cases, including the TCDSA, which we did in August of 2016.
Javier, you can remove your mask and maybe a little closer to the microphone. Thank you.
Sorry about that.
No, you're fine.
Again, so TCDSA filed based on the precedent set in Flores versus City of San Gabriel in August of 2016. During that case, I remember specifically the county litigating or arguing that members of the DSA were hourly employees. Later on, when we were going through the numbers and stuff on where we thought things were wrong, I discovered that the change that's being considered for implementation today was actually implemented in September of 2017. So in March of 2018, the DSA filed an unfair labor practice claim against the county to layer for failing to meet and confer and imposing the unilateral change, again, that you're considering today. Over the course of the next two and a half years, albeit slowed down a little bit because of COVID, and then at the bargaining table, under direction from our legal counsel, they said, "Don't discuss the unfair labor practice claim at those tables." So that's why it took a little bit longer to get this done. Ultimately, the case moved forward through purb, and the DSA and the county reached a settlement agreement awarding full back pay to members of the DSA from September of 2017 up until May of 2020, I believe. There were some nuances that are still being worked out as far as the settlement agreement, going back to the status quo and implementing the change. The county has been working with us on getting those things trued up because it's my understanding that they're not able to accommodate the change as of now with the ADP system. So although we tried our best in our negotiations at the tables to come to a resolution that was favorable to both the county and to the DSA, unfortunately, we couldn't get there. So apart from us considering it just a strict takeaway from us, it comes out to the tune of, well, the payout for three years was roughly $300,000. So roughly $100,000 a year. There's some flaws that we see in the last, best, and final proposal from the county. So going back to the county's initial response to the unfair labor charge that we filed, the county asserted members of the DSA are hourly employees and explicitly states the county does not have the option of choosing a methodology to calculate the rate of pay. The hourly methodology applied to hourly employees requires all remuneration not subject to exclusion be added and divided by all hours actually worked to determine the hourly rate of pay. That's 29 CFR 778.110 parentheses A. So this... The county's last, best, and final offer contradicts itself and the position it asserted in its response to the unfair labor practice claim. The language in the last, best, and final is not consistent with either the salary or the hourly methodology as provided. Instead, it appears the last, best, and final is picking and choosing what it wants from each, the salary method and the hourly method, and creating its own methodology. The LBF, last, best, and final, chooses to use the .5 valuation provided in the hourly methodology to calculate incentive pay for overtime, yet chooses scheduled hours as a divisor instead of all hours actually worked as outlined in the salary methodology. So intrinsically, I think the last, best, and final is not consistent with the hourly methodology or the salary methodology it's created. So in addition to the created methodology, for some reason, the last, best, and final seeks to remove the language "regular rate of pay" from the memorandum of understanding. The FLSA defines the regular rate of pay as "all remuneration for employment paid to or on behalf of an employee subject to certain statutory exclusions. Base pay plus non-excluded incentive pays equals the regular rate of pay." This is a key definition of the hourly methodology. And it should be noted that none of the incentive pays available to members of the DSA are excluded under CFR 207E. Removing the term from the MOU does not mean it doesn't exist anymore. Nonetheless, the proper application of the hourly methodology, which the county asserts members of the DSA are, results in no loss in pay to the individual employee. As a matter of fact, this is explicitly stated in the county's response to the initial unfair labor practice claim filed by the DSA. It states, "For hourly employees, the DOL, Department of Labor, method requires all remuneration not subject to exclusion be added and divided by all hours actually worked to determine the hourly regular rate." This means that any item, such as cash and lieu, which is now added to the regular rate, is spread evenly across all hours worked in the work period, and a .5 multiplier is used for the increase to the regular rate for the overtime hours only. The employee is still effectively paid 1.5 times the regular rate for the overtime hours. Again, this methodology results in no loss in pay. And that pretty much sums up our position. First time being here, didn't want to be here, wanted to agree at the table. You know, we've always wanted to work with, you know, the county and the board and at our negotiations. It's just, this time, it's a tough, tough sell, you know. In 2010, in the recession, I don't know how many of you were serving on the board back then, but we negotiated concessions. We gave up, you know, our sick-time buyback, our uniform allowances. The threshold for overtime went from 80 in '84 to the 7K exemption, which is '86. And during the successor MOU since then, especially the last two, things were considerably better for the county than in 2010 when we negotiated. And we've worked to try and get those things back. We did manage to get our uniform allowances back. We got sickly buyback back for a while, and it has since sunsetted and gone away. But one of the things that we've been unable to get back is our overtime threshold. So those things, coupled with the DSA historically being, you know, the lowest-paid comparable counties, the lowest-paid agency to the comparable counties, it's a tough sell. It's really tough to say, hey, we're going to go take another dollar from you for every overtime hour that you work. So that's pretty much all I have. I thank you for your time. I appreciate your consideration on our position. That's all I got.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Will the county's negotiator please identify herself and make her presentation to the board?
Good morning, Board Chair, Board members, CAO, County Council. My name is Shaleen Bennett, and I am an attorney at Liebert Cassidy Whitmore. I have served as your county's lead negotiator for a few years, including most recently during negotiations and impasse on the overtime issue generally that Mr. Martinez described. And it relates to calculation of overtime and solely on a re-opener with the Tulare County Deputy Sheriff's Association. And again, as Madam Chair, I will refer to them jointly as TCDSA. I am making this presentation to you this morning on behalf of the county bargaining team. It is pursuant to Government Code Section 3505.7. And the county team recommends that your board resolve the impasse between the county and TCDSA by adopting the resolution before you. and TCDSA by adopting the resolution before you on the issue of unilaterally implementing and imposing the LBF, the last, best, and final. What is at issue before your board? There, Mr. Martinez and I agree. It all started with the seminal case of Flores versus City of San Gabriel in June of 2016, a Ninth Circuit decision. What occurred there for your county and all other public employers in the state of California is there was a, an increase in your personnel costs. And that increase was a result of the county now having to include in your overtime calculation cash and lieu medical benefits. So obviously, that increased your costs, your personnel costs, your overtime costs. And as a result of that, your county negotiated with, I believe, all of your bargaining groups that were not exempt from overtime, because as you know, some bargaining groups, PAT, COP, G-Law, PLEMA, they're exempt. So other than those, we negotiated with your bargaining groups a provision in the MOUs. And for a number of them, that provision includes to reduce the county's potential liability for FLSA, Fair Labor Standards Act, overtime payments. And again, the Fair Labor Standards Act, unlike private sector, which are wage orders and the labor code, the federal law, the FLSA, is what guides us as our legal standard in public sector. The county sought various ways through bargaining to reduce the overtime costs, and it wasn't just limited to the cash and lieu issue. We looked at sickly buyback, again, as Mr. Martinez referred to, bilingual pay, straight time overtime, overtime premium. We looked at a number of items to reduce the overtime costs. And again, this was to offset the increased cost that you realized through Flores. So what's before you today? It's straightforward. I know and I respect the fact that Mr. Martinez focused on the purb litigation. That's separate and apart from the issue before you. The purb litigation, I was not involved in that. That's a separate entity. But it is a separate track that does not affect what is before you today. That matter is resolved. It is resolved through an agreed-upon settlement agreement. That agreed-upon settlement agreement was even finely tuned and revised. That is a separate issue, and I would ask your board not to conflate the two. The proposal before you is straightforward, and it is legally justified and compliant. Currently, your county overtime formula calculation is 1.5 times base rate of pay plus total additional pay codes. What are additional pay codes? Bilingual education, the extra. The county overtime proposal that you are looking at and considering for unilateral implementation changes that. 1.5 times base rate of pay plus point five times the additional codes in a work period. So the change is simply moving the calculation from 1.5 to point five on only the additional pay codes. Why now? The timing is appropriate. As your CIO indicated, the first time that we pitched this up to the DSA was in November, generally verbally October of 2018, and then a proposal in November 2018. No agreement. Then again, 2019 successor negotiations, no agreement. Then again, May 2020 re-opener negotiations, no agreement. That's three rounds of bargaining, your board, where we have been discussing this issue since, and over two years, over two years, with no agreement. All other county non-exempt groups that have had this proposal presented to them have reached agreement with your county. There are eight bargaining groups. Three are exempt. So this point five overtime on additional pay overtime issue applies to five of your groups. The district attorneys, SEIU, probation, fire, and DSA. All other groups besides DSA have agreed to this change from the 1.5 to point five on additional pays. Importantly, as a result of DSA not agreeing to this proposal, the county must manually calculate these calculations for the DSA. This is an administrative burden in manually calculating. Without a doubt, it leads to more human error. I want to thank Kelsey Tolbert, I believe she's here. She's also worked with us on the bargaining team as your chief financial reporting and audits in the auditor controller's office, and she has spoken at the bargaining table to the challenges and the time that has occurred in having to manually calculate this anomaly for the DSA. What's the rough estimate on the savings to your county? It's about, we articulated at the bargaining table to Mr. Martinez and the negotiator, about $113,000 a year. That's been slightly adjusted recently to about $125,000 in savings a year. I would ask your board to consider, seriously consider, adopting the resolution. We've been at this for a while. I understand we're about to enter into successor negotiations. I am confident we will be addressing a number of issues during that time. This one needs to be put to rest and finalized. So again, just to make sure that we've covered all the technical process, to make sure we're legally compliant before you, again, May 1, 2020, we reopened. We met and engaged in a number of meetings with Mr. Martinez and the DSA, TCDSA representative, not able to reach agreement. Gave them our last, best, and final on October 14, 2020. Still no agreement. Declared impasse. We have both agreed to mediation. Mediation occurred through the Public Employment Relations Board. They assisted with a mediator. That was November 23, 2020. No agreement. No fact finding was requested, so we've exhausted all impasse procedures. Government Code 3505.7 authorizes your board to implement the LBFO, and we would recommend that you do that at this time. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Bennett. Are there any more comments at this time? Okay. Mr. Martinez, TCDSA has an opportunity for a three-minute rebuttal.
I can remember everything she said when I came up here.
Your mask, you can take this.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's fine.
So when we did approach the county, actually, when we did open up negotiations, TCDSA actually requested to merge this in with our negotiations that we had going on our regular, because this was a, they called us to meet and confer on this issue on its own merits. The county requested to keep the two tables separate. That's why it took so long. So when she's, when Ms. Bennett is saying that, you know, we negotiated three rounds, it wasn't necessarily three rounds that we talked about this issue. We did negotiate successor MOUs, but this specific issue, the county requested to keep at a separate table. That's one of the reasons why it was delayed so long. And that's it. I mean, I think the timing, she spoke to the timing that it's appropriate. I wholeheartedly disagree. We're in the middle of a pandemic where everybody's being impacted. You know, several of our deputy spouses are out of work, and this is going to hit them in the pocketbook. I'm fortunate, I'm still working, my wife is still working, but the kids are out of school. You talked about schools earlier and the cost of our daycare. I just got my thing the other day, and I paid $12,000 last year in daycare. So if I'm feeling it, I'm sure everybody else is feeling it, and I think this is not the appropriate time to go and impose a takeaway on our members. The service they provide to the county is exceptional. You guys see it, all the stuff that they do, coaching basketball, football, all the stuff that we're involved in. These guys volunteer their time. They're not being paid for that. So I would emphatically request that you vote not to impose this LBF on members of the TCDSA. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Ms. Bennett?
Thank you again. Just two points. There, Mr. Martinez and I agree on keeping them at separate tables. Yes, they were. However, we went through the process. We tried to reach agreement with successor, let me back up. We tried to reach agreement through the first re-opener that we had in 2018. We were not able to. It closed out. We didn't, we didn't come to you with impasse. We then tried again in 2019. It didn't, we didn't reach agreement. There was bargaining back and forth. We didn't come to you with impasse then. That closed out, and again, it reopened in May of 2020. So we disagree on what Mr. Martinez indicated was the county wanting to keep the tables separate. They were naturally separate because they were different negotiations. I understand the takeaway. I respect the fact that it's a hard sell to the TCDSA members. The best calculation we can come up with, that it's an approximate $10 a pay period in a reduction. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bennett. All right. This item is on our closed session agenda, and I will now recess into, or adjourn this into closed session.
Yes, Madam Chair, this item is agendized as Item A, and we will return. There will not be any announcement out. Yes, Madam Chair, this item is agendized as item A, and we will return. There will not be any announcement out.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I will bring this matter back to the board for any comments or deliberation.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Vanderpoel.
So, thank you for giving me a chance to speak and I want to thank the Deputy Sheriff's Association and I want to thank all of our bargaining groups that have bargained with the county over the years. This did include five different groups in the overtime calculation proposal and it has been resolved with four of the five and here we are today with the Deputy Sheriff's Association. I have been on the board, I'm in year number 13 and I want to thank the relationship that we have had between the county and the Deputy Sheriff's Association. I think it's a good relationship and I think that we do have great people working for this county, whether it's DSA, whether it's any other bargaining group. It's never easy to be in this position where we sit here and are forced to impose anything upon a bargaining group. I know that this has happened a couple of times in my career here on the Board of Supervisors and it's never taken lightly, especially when we're dealing with our public safety bargaining units. From my perspective here, I think that it's important that we do whatever we can for our employees, but at the same time, we have our ultimate responsibilities to the taxpayers of this county and when we've been able to reach agreement with four out of five and only have one bargaining group, some of those groups also being public safety within the four that have agreed, it kind of makes you wonder what's taking the DSA or holding them back from coming to agreement. And I understand there's a little bit of a difference of opinions from what the DSA has presented here today, but what I will say is I've always been an advocate for law enforcement and also for our employees and for our taxpayers, but I think it's an important thing from an employer perspective and from the taxpayer perspective that we keep a level of consistency across all of our bargaining groups and ultimately settle on the .5 calculation. And that's kind of my perspective. As difficult as it is, I do think that there have been other situations where, not to get away from this specific issue at hand, but where we have done more for the Deputy Sheriff's Association and I want to make sure that our board members and also members of the Deputy Sheriff's Association remember those times, remember what has been done because I think that you do have advocates up here, but at the same time, there are times where difficult decisions have to be made and we do have to create a consistency across the board. That's all that I have to say specifically and if anybody else wants to make comments before we take any motion or action.
Oh, thank you Supervisor. Supervisor Townsend?
Thank you Madam Chair. And yeah, I just wanted to note that, so I've been here a little bit over two years now and so I've been through several of the sessions, have heard quite a bit. There's a whole lot on these negotiations that go on and so I wanted to thank those that are with TCDSA and their negotiators and our negotiators for giving us all of the information, for giving us the different sides. And just to note that it took us quite a bit of time, even in closed session, just to ask those last few questions even after a couple of years of input. And so, and I just think it's because of the general concern of this board, you know, public safety being a general concern and priority of this board, that take every action very seriously and hope that it works out the best for everyone involved. So, thank you all for your helping that.
Supervisor McCary.
You know, having just got elected to the board and not having the history and being told this, so I do have a lot of questions and put a lot of thought into this. I mean, it's difficult on both sides, so I just want everyone to understand that we really put a lot of thought of this. I put a lot of thought of this and I'm not taking any decision lightly. So, just, I just want everyone to know that and that's it.
Thank you. Supervisor Valero.
Yes. So first and foremost, I would like to thank the TCDSA for being here and sharing their remarks, as well as both parties to be here to continue to inform the board on this matter. I too am going to echo the sentiments of my colleague Supervisor Vanderpoel in terms of consistency and noting that the county has made these agreements possible with SEIU, with TCPA, with TCPFA, with the District Attorney Investigators, all in agreement. And I just want to continue to see that consistency across the board. In addition to that, an additional kind of concern for me was the time allocation considered when it comes to a significant amount of additional payroll work and administrative time and burden to manually calculate the separate and unique formula for such bargaining unit. And so with that being said, I just want to continue to, I want to continue to really see how we continue to meet on a win-win and will continue to encourage the consistency across the board when it comes to things like this.
Thank you Supervisor. I too want to thank the TCDSA for all their work. Mr. Martinez, thank you for being here today. As has already been said, it's never an easy decision. We always, of course, want to have positive relationships with all of our employees, especially with those who, you know, go out and put their lives on the line every day to keep us safe. So with that, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second the motion Madam Chair.
And the motion is?
The recommendation to impose the county's last best and final.
Okay, so that was moved by Supervisor Valero.
Correct Supervisor Valero, I didn't just make up my own second to a motion. I just want to clarify that.
Yes.
Valero, that was your attempt?
I concur, yes.
Okay, please cast your votes. Did everybody vote? Oh, motion passes four to one. McCary, no. All right. Thank you all for being here for that and we will move on to our next agenda item, which is a request from the Library Department to approve an agreement with the Tulare County Library Foundation to provide county library staff to support the foundation. Darla, welcome.
Good morning. Chair Shecklian, members of the board, CEO Brett, Council Flores, and Clerk Benton. I'm here to request an approval of an agreement with our Tulare County Library Foundation. The foundation currently provides funding and support to the library system, system-wide, to enhance programming efforts. The foundation wishes to help fund a position to support their fundraising efforts, donor support, programming, and volunteer efforts. In addition, the position will be able to supply clerical and bookkeeping functions by the foundation. This position will be called a library volunteer and donation coordinator and as we have funds available for extra help hours outside of what the foundation supports, we'll use that person to help support our other support group, the friends, as they need it. So, if you have any questions at this time, there is a slight change to the request and Melinda will share that with you.
Yes, Board. At the time that the item was submitted, the request was to authorize the county librarian to sign the agreement. At this time, it actually should be stated that we are going to ratify the county librarian's signature as it was signed prior to it coming to you. So that will be part of your motion.
Okay. All right. Any comments or questions for Darla regarding this? Yes?
Madam Chair, just a quick comment. I want to thank Darla for all of your work and being really innovative in how you have come to this board to partner and to improve services that you're not only delivering to your external customers, but to be the most efficient that you can be within the department. I think that you've done a wonderful job and I'm always happy to support your requests to further the library's vision and your programs, partnerships, efforts out in the community. You've done a wonderful job and very happy to support this. So I would make a motion if there's nothing further, Madam Chair.
Any other comments? Any public comments, Madam Clerk? Okay, we have a motion by Supervisor Vanderpoel, a second by Supervisor Valero. Please cast your votes. Motion passes five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We really appreciate it. It's going to be very helpful.
Okay, our last item is board member requests. Do we have any board member requests? Okay, Madam Council, do we have a need for closed session?
Yes, we do have a need for closed session. Items B through D will be heard and there will not be any announcement.
All right. Thank you all for being here today. Meeting adjourned.